Why is everybody so quiet today? See how it works, huh? I'll bring the Butte Silver Bow Council Commissioners Committee of the whole meeting to order for Wednesday, October 22nd, 2025. Can we please have a roll call?
One presiding, nine present, two absent.
Okay, thank you. Please let the record reflect that Commissioner Mankins and Walker are excused for tonight. Commissioner Thatcher, would you lead us in the prayer and the pledge?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which so greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Director thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Next item on tonight's agenda is any public comment on any items that are on the agenda. Now would be the opportunity for any member of the public to get up and speak on any item that is on tonight's agenda. We do ask that you try to keep it within three minutes, and if there is, please state your name and address for the record and what communication you'd like to talk about.
My name is Joe Griffin, and, excuse me, I live at 1121 West Diamond. I'm here to speak to the presentation from DEQ tonight. I know this council has consistently asked for updates and information on Superfund. Superfund is a very important part of this community, and I also wanted to say that I'm also president of Citizens Technical Environmental Committee. It's another way for people to get information on Superfund. We try to invite various speakers, including DEQ for various parts, or we'll get ARCO, or we'll get MR up there, so I just wanted to bring that out, and you guys are always invited. I think you should be getting our emails, so hope to see some of you there. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other member of the public that would like to speak on any item that's on tonight's agenda? Nobody's running up real quick. I'll move on to the report of the chair. Just a couple things to report. Chief Executive Gallagher asked me to mention that it is Red Ribbon Week this week, right, Chief Executive Gallagher, and so we would ask that you observe that if you choose to. And then we don't have a council meeting next Wednesday, the 29th, because it's the fifth Wednesday of the month, so our next meeting will be on November 5th. I'll move on to Section 1, bid openings, public hearings, and/or presentations. Bid opening, we do have one, that's Communication 2025-471. This bid opening is not going to happen because it was replaced with Communication 25-500 last week meeting, moving it to the 5th of November, so this communication or this bid opening will not happen tonight. I'll move right into presentation, which is number 2, Communication 2025-472. Amy Steinmetz, DEQ Waste Management and Remediation Division Administrator, requesting Council Commissioners authorization to schedule a presentation on October 22nd, 2025, for updates on the Blacktail Creek project located in the Butte Priority Soils Operable Unit, BIPSU, and the Montana Pole Superfund site. We did receive an email from Ms. Steinmetz stating that she was unable to make tonight's meeting because there's some things going on that she needed to address, but she assured me that we have capable colleagues of hers to give us the report in her side, so please come up to the podium, and I believe it's Alex and Jacob, right?
Yep.
Welcome to the Council Commissioners meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jacob Wheeling. I am the project manager for the Montana Pole Superfund site here in Butte with DEQ. So to kind of start things off, I would like to just kind of give you some background on what's going on at the pole plant right now. So to point a few things out on the map, we have the CAMU, which is a corrective action management unit, and that is a RICRA compliant hazardous waste repository. That is where all the soils went that, after they were treated in the land treatment unit, they were put in the repository because they didn't meet requirements for dioxins. So all the soils that were treated on-site that didn't meet requirements for dioxins are now in the CAMU. To the north of I-15, I-90, we have the water treatment plant, which is currently active, and we have two capture trenches, the near creek and the near highway capture trench. And then, obviously, the site is split in half by the freeway, by I-15, I-90. And, yeah, that's, would like to point out on that one. So to give a little more background on the Montana Pole site, the site operated as a wood treatment plant from 1946 to 1984, and they treated generally post poles and bridge timbers. They didn't treat very much for the mine. They used a petroleum carrier, like diesel, typically diesel, with a 5% pentachlorophenol solution to treat the posts and poles, generally in pressure treating units and pressure treating retorts. At this point, the contaminants of concern of the site are pentachlorophenol, polyaromatic hydrocarbons, and dioxin furans. The site, the operation ceased and the plant closed in 1984, and it was listed on the NPL in 1987. There were two removal actions on-site in 1985 and 1992. After the rod was signed, there are six phases called out in the rod, five of which are either complete or actively happening, one still to come. And then in 2022, an ESD, or an Explanation of Significant Differences, was signed, and that's really what led to the creation of the CAMU. The CAMU construction, again, came from the 2022 ESD, and that included the deconstruction of the land treatment unit, which is just basically a big land farm. You take the soils out of the ground, spread them out on the ground, water them, and then the pentachlorophenol will break down over time in the air. From those soils were then stockpiled and then put in the CAMU because the land treatment unit was not successful in treating dioxins to cleanup levels. It was good at treating the pentachlorophenol and PAHs. As part of a CAMU, you also have to manage all stormwater that comes on-site. If stormwater comes on-site, we keep it away from the CAMU. We keep it out of contamination, and if it lands on-site, it infiltrates and is treated by the water treatment plant. Next, I just wanted to kind of quickly go through a few things that are upcoming for the Montana Pole site. We are currently designing a new SCADA system, which is basically the computer system that runs the water treatment plant. We're monitoring and improving vegetation on-site. Vegetation is very important, it protects the soils from eroding and flowing off-site. We're going to begin scoping the final phase of remediation, which is Phase 5, and that will include treatment of the last major source of pentachlorophenol on-site, which is under the freeway, because that was buried when the freeway was made. And then, also, we're looking at redevelopment opportunities for the southern portion of the site. Once the CAMU is completed, all of the contaminated soils are isolated in the CAMU, and the southern portion of the site is getting close to being able to be redeveloped. In 2024, we completed around a hydroseeding on the CAMU. The slopes of the CAMU were pretty much bare after the construction and after the 2023 storm event. I believe my predecessor discussed that the last time he was here. So in 2024, we came in and hydroseeded the whole CAMU, and this is what the, oop, there, this is what the vegetation currently looks like, so a little bit still to go, and we're hopeful that in another growing season, we'll get this vegetation to come in a little bit thicker, but we're looking good right now. We do have vegetation on the site, and, yeah, it'll be good to see what happens in the next couple of growing seasons. Kind of going a little bit more depth of Phase 5. So there was a significant contamination source that was buried under the freeway. Because the contamination was diesel and penta, it sat on top of the groundwater, and as the groundwater flowed, as the water treatment plant lowered the groundwater, the contamination stayed above the groundwater. So currently, it sits on a shelf, and we'll have to, we're working with our consultants to figure out the best way to get at that safely and while also containing the plume as it is. So currently, the water treatment plant keeps groundwater basically out of the source. We still do see contamination in there, but it is captured in the trenches and then treated in the water treatment plant on-site. We are also working closely with the BRW, the Beat Reduction Works team, because they're located so close and their work will also require a lot of groundwater, we are, we're working closely with them to make sure we're timing everything correctly so we don't implement a remedy and then they de-water and pull the plume elsewhere. So we want to make sure that we are, yeah, we're working close with BRW. Last thing I'd like to discuss is potential redevelopment opportunities. So with the new Northwest Energy High Pressure Gas Line going in, originally, the line ran right through the middle of Montana Pole. With this new line in, we're going to abandon the current gas line, and we will be able to sample and potentially remediate that actual gas line corridor. So with that, let's see, one more, there we go. After the construction of the CAMU, I know Dave had discussed transferring some of this land, working with Butte Silver Bow to transfer some of this land in the future. We'll work closely with you guys. We would really like to make that happen if we can. With this gas line abandonment, that parcel AL, which is that skinny little red one, that we might be able to remediate that and combine those two parts, the green and the yellow parcels, into two parcels instead of three separate ones. We do have to sample and see where we're at. Because that line was put in in the 40s, we really have no idea what's there, so once that's, that work is complete and we'll be able to sample it, we'll look at options for remediating that parcel and being able to combine these two. But with that, are there any questions about Montana Pole?
Thank you, Jacob, for that, that presentation. I just have a question. I know it's been discussed for many years, that once cleanup met a certain condition, that it was going to be turned over to maybe Butte Silver Bow for redevelopment, or there were other options, and I know the council at that time was concerned about the longevity and how we would maintain it and make sure that it wouldn't, you know, the barrier wouldn't be broke or any of that stuff. What's the thought from DEQ now of what that transition would look like?
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Morgan, for your question. I, so to go back one slide here, the CAMU will remain, and generally, the red parcels will remain under DEQ control forever. That's all, that's part of running a CAMU, a RICRA compliant CAMU. The rest of the land, the surface soil is pretty much clean for recreational and light industrial use, so we will obviously work with Butte Silver Bow for what your, if, for what your vision is of that. We want to work with you to get the site to a position that you want it. We're not just going to, okay, it's yours, bye. We won't do that. We're gonna, we'll work with you on what you want to do. The CAMU will stay with us forever, and that's really what needs to be protected, because that's where the contamination still is. The rest of the work on-site is really in the groundwater, so as long as we stay out of the groundwater, that's kind of our biggest concerns.
Okay. Does any of the Commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. You've pretty much answered my questions, but I was just a little concerned, you know, when you said back in 2022, it was a year and a half ago, when they had the big rain and it washed out the cap on the CAMU, and the vegetation hadn't taken yet, and that was a big part of the problem, and you redid it and whatever. The picture you showed so far, and you said we need a, we're hoping for better vegetation. Obviously, you use top-notch soil and top-notch seed. Should we be concerned that the vegetation hasn't taken yet well enough, or what's our guarantee that the better vegetation so we don't have these washouts again?
Absolutely.
Jacob.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. So right now, so going into next year, so we'll have this winter, that work was done in the fall of 2024, so basically, all of the vegetation to this point has been in one growing season. Going into next growing season, I have been discussing with my contractor to bring out a watering truck as well. We kind of think the biggest problem right now is there's just not enough water. So in the spring, depending on the snowpack and how much water we get, we do have some plans to get a watering truck out there, and I think that's going to, that's going to push us over the edge. I feel comfortable with where we are now, having been one growing season, but depending on the snowpack, we will, we'll bring in some water if we have to and get that, get some, get it growing.
Follow-up, Commissioner Callahan.
So you're confident that the stuff that's there will come in better? Will you add more seed, or what's, maybe both?
Jacob.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Honestly, probably both. Right now, I feel confident with where we are, that we're not going to wash out this year. Now that I, knock on wood, now that I've said that, but, um, but I think with one more growing season, we'll get some more robust growth out of that. And then, there are a couple bare spots that we probably will hand-seed in the spring, just depending on how growth starts, but that is, that's one of the things we're watching every time we go out there, to make sure we are getting vegetation out there.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Jacob, good job. I don't really have any questions. I just think that this council would be remiss. I mean, you did a wonderful job, and I appreciate that you put this in layman's terms for some of us, that this stuff's so far over our head, but I would just like to extend our respect and, you know, our well wishes to Mr. Bauer's family. He was a wonderful man who, you know, taught me a lot regarding this subject, and he provided a wonderful service to Butte Silver Bow, and I think that all of this council is very appreciative of that, and we wish, we wish to respect him and you guys and his family and friends, so I just wanted to give that time to Mr. Bauer, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thatcher. Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you very much, Chairman Morgan. Jacob, thank you very much for being here. I do have a couple questions, all of them mainly to do with water. You were talking about how the stormwater, if it leaves off-site, it'll be treated, I think you said, at the water treatment facility? How would, is a water treatment facility set up to handle an overload of contaminants from the pole plant site? How would that go into work? And then you mentioned snowfall in large pools of water. I understand we need a lot of water to protect that CAMU for the vegetation, like you and Commissioner Callahan were talking about, and the vital importance of that, and so I see the need for that, but you had concerns about de-watering and that water getting out of there possibly with some of those other projects. Are there anything like that scheduled, or what other concerns should we be looking at in those regards than a follow-up after?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. So I apologize if I misspoke, so if stormwater flows onto Montana Pole, we have infrastructure built to channel it away from the contamination and then flow off-site. If stormwater lands on the contaminated soil, it infiltrates into the groundwater and then is, is in the groundwater and then is captured by one of the two groundwater capture trenches, which feed into the water treatment plant. We are set up to handle a large increase in groundwater flow. Currently, we can increase the pumping, probably, let's see here, I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head, but we can increase the pumping flow to, to handle an increase in groundwater, and we have done that before. If I remember correctly, 2012, there was a high groundwater flow, and with the water treatment plant, every two weeks, we sample the inflow in between our two treating units and then the outflow, so we do have 30 years of data saying that we can handle whatever groundwater flows into Montana Pole, into the capture trenches. The de-watering for us, because BRW, because of where BRW is located, when they begin their construction, they are slightly down gradient, a little to the side of the groundwater direction flow. On Montana Pole, groundwater generally flows northwest towards Silver Bow Creek, and with their de-watering efforts that they'll have in the upcoming years, we just need to make sure that we turn our pumps up so that their de-watering doesn't pull contamination around our capture trenches. We can do that. We have the capacity to do that. We are working closely with them to make sure our timing is correct on that.
Follow-up, Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you. And I know in the past, there's been talk, I remember talking to Dr. Ray, one of the professors over here, and he was concerned, and some of the other constituents I have who I've talked to, were concerned about the monies keeping the pumps and the treatment facilities running. At one time, I've heard they were supposed to run in perpetuity, which is a long time, and then that was switched to a matter of years, and there's a big difference in my mind between perpetuity and 10, 20, even 35, 40 years. So if, could you add any clarification or any new numbers or insight on those issues?
Jacob.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, absolutely. So currently, the Montana Pole settlement is held by DEQ and is invested, and we have roughly $19 million in that account right now. We are able to run the water treatment plant solely on interest. We are not drawing down on, on those monies at all. The only time we draw down on the monies are for construction. So Phase 5 will, will cost us money for that, and really with the groundwater, you're absolutely correct, we do have a limited, a very limited budget for what the scope of the groundwater construction will be. We're going to look for the best bang for our buck, and we're really early in that process. We haven't even really started scoping that yet with our consultants, but we're looking for the best bang for the buck, and the timeline really depends on how effective Phase 5 will be. If we're able to inject chemical oxidants into the groundwater and it treats the source area, the plume is most likely going to stabilize and we'll be able to turn off the water treatment plant. However, if those chemical oxidants don't reduce the contamination enough to the point where we feel comfortable turning off the water treatment plant, it's going to have to stay on, and it'll stay on as long as it needs to. So with that in mind, the, the cost for Phase 5 is going to be, it's a big consideration for us. Are we able to leave on the water treatment plant afterwards, and if we have to? And to be honest, I also run the Idaho Pole site, I'm on the site team for the Idaho Pole site in Bozeman, and they are a little bit ahead, and they have done some chemical injections. They are effective, but generally not to the point where I would feel comfortable turning off the water treatment plant. Now, the sites are different, the contamination's different, we just have some lessons learned from that site that we can apply to Montana Pole, because they're very similar sites. But, yeah, so if, if Phase 5 is really effective and we're able to turn off the water treatment plant, great. I would guess that we probably will not be, so we'll, we're looking at running the water treatment plant for, into perpetuity.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shea, and then Commissioner O'Leary, and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is, is the site suitable for a tour? And if it is, I don't know if there's been any tours this summer, I haven't been to many CTEC meetings the last few months, but I would, I would love to know if CTEC could coordinate another tour, or if DEQ could coordinate a tour. It was, it was really, really helpful for me in understanding what was going on there, to walk around down there, so that, just throwing that out into the air. Thank you.
Jacob.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, absolutely, we can, we can coordinate a tour there. At this point, we can see that the CAMU, the majority of the work ongoing is in the groundwater, so it's kind of hard to tour the groundwater, but we can tour the water treatment plant and all the facilities there, as well as the, yeah, the completed CAMU, so yes, we can absolutely coordinate a tour.
Follow-up, Commissioner Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much for that. Should, should we reach out to you for a tour, or would you like to work through our, the council secretary, maybe the chief executive, to set something up? I don't need an answer on that.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Leary.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Mr. Wheeling, for coming and doing this presentation, very informative. You were talking about the plume, and I'm just wondering what the extent of the boundaries of that are. I know you're talking about under the interstate and whatnot, but if you could maybe just kind of point out the landmarks on that map so we can understand what the extent of that plume is?
Jacob.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Absolutely. Let me go back to another map here. This one won't work. I also have our plume maps, and I would be happy to send those to all of you if you would like to see that, the plume maps we get. We do sample groundwater twice a year, and we update that with everyone, so I'll make sure to send you plume maps so you can get the exact picture. Generally, the groundwater cleanup number is one part per billion. Generally, the contour for one part per billion, kind of to the south, basically splits the CAMU, so there's a little contamination to the south, and then runs north under the freeway. The eastern boundary is generally where the freeway bridge is, and then it runs north across Silver Bow to the municipal water treatment plant to the north. A western boundary would be the, roughly the black line on the part of the site to the west, and it generally is rectangular, it's not perfect. I will make sure to send you a plume map so you can see where it runs.
Thank you. Commissioner Callahan.
Thank you. I just want to piggyback a little bit off of Commissioner Anderson's question on the filtration system and stuff. I remember through the years, when they were talking about cleaning this up, you know, it's been going on for a couple decades, I think, and as they've made progress, a lot of progress in probably the last five or six years, and when they were getting the CAMU built and everything, they had discussed that the volume of water had decreased and the contaminants and the severity of the contaminants have decreased. Or do we still go in that direction, or has it stabilized out, or?
Jacob.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. At this point, the plume has generally stabilized, and that source area under the freeway is really driving that, and until we're able to treat that or get an idea if we're going to be able to treat that, the plume is pretty much stabilized at this point.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Fisher. The old stomping grounds.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Jacob, appreciate you being here. Follow-up on Commissioner Thatcher, David Bauer was a real asset to our community. I'm going to give you a little history, then I'll ask a question. I was raised in that neighborhood, and I was there when the fire broke out in the 70s. When we were kids, when the highway come through and they're building the bridges, our When we were kids, when the highway come through, when they're building the bridges, our animals, our dogs and animals would go down there, they'd come home lick their paws and die. So I mean, it is, and we called it creosote at the time. Uh, now the, you know, pen fluoride and, uh, dioxins and things like that are kinda new to us, older people like that, so. I was also there when they blew up the stack at the Magnes Plant, the bute reduction works, where the dust all fell to the ground, and it still remains there today, you know, and that dust blew all over there. The thing, I guess, I, I, I guess, I, my question is, you know, the plant was in forty-six, they closed it in eighty-four and eighty-seven, I guess we started doing some things. What is your assessment of what we've achieved in the years, I mean, uh, you, you're probably young enough to know that, you know, David Bowers had a lot of experience. What, what do you think we're accomplishing in all the things that we've done at Montana Pole and the money we've spent for what we've received so far, I mean, I still have family live in the neighborhood, um, many of us, uh, many people live there, still suffering from, you know, cancer, Parkinson's, all kinds of things that happen there, a lot of us still think that is a reason for it. What, what is your assessment of the past and what does the future hold? Are we still another twenty years out before we get in there and start really getting things done? It seemed like there's been a lot of success, but a lot of failure in that time too, so, just a little assessment of the past, present, maybe the future, thank you.
Jacob.
Thank you Chair, thank you Commissioner, um, ju- just a, one, one comment on that I would like to make, so these wood treating chemicals, pentaclofenol and creosote, they're both used, and, um, they were both used on Montana Pole, more pentaclofenol over time. Um, I always like to give the example, these chemicals are made to make trees last for a hundred and fifty years. I mean, they are very long-lasting chemicals, and, and very, um, very toxic chemicals that, that work, they make trees last a hundred and fifty years. So, I think the, the biggest wins on Montana Pole are, we can see on, with the soil. Um, at this point, I mean, we have vegetation growing, if we go back, um, I, I'm sure you have seen the pictures and you, you've seen it, there, there was nothing growing on that site when it closed. Um, it was, it was a moonscape at that point. So I think the, the biggest wins over the time have been the soil, I think the, the future work is really going to be groundwater focused, um, trying to shrink the plume as much as possible, and really attacking that source area. And I, I agree, I worked with, uh, Mr. Bowers for six months right before he retired, so, uh, he was a, a wonderful, a wonderful mentor for me as I started my career at DEQ. Um, and I think, I think he had, he was ins- instrumental in that, in the soils part of the site, and that's really where he focused, to get to the site where it is now. Um, and we have wildlife on site, that we have a herd of meal deer that live on site. Um, a lot of water fowl come to Silver Bow right in front of a, right to the north of Montana Pole, and that was never the case when the site was active, so I think, um, I think we're in a really good place, there's still work to do, absolutely. But, um, as it sits right now, I think we're in a, in a much better place than we were in nineteen eighty-five.
Follow up Commissioner Fisher.
Uh, thank you Chairman Morgan, thank you, I appreciate your input. What are your thoughts on, uh, people still selling railroad ties that were soaked in this? And they're selling them to local businesses, I mean, they're still selling these, and the railroad companies purchased a lot of them, I mean, you know, they're all over still. What are your thoughts about them still being in circulation, and people handling them, you know, and using them for projects, I mean? It seems like that's kind of a, all the work that DEQ and everyone else has done to clean a project, we're still having these things out in circulation.
Jacob.
Thank you Chair, thank you Commissioner, um, that's a great question, I'll be honest, I have not looked at any research about the leachability of creosote, uh, from railroad ties, I, I don't know what the data says on that. Um, I, I do know, once the posts are treated, the creosote is generally sunk into the, into the timbers, um, and it's not like spilling liquid pentaclofenol and diesel for forty years, uh, into the ground, so I, I can't say, 'cause I have not read the research, but, uh, for railroad ties specifically, but it is, it's, it's, this was a way different situation than a, the single railroad tie or railroad ties.
Any other questions? Alright, well seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation, and Commissioner Shea may have a follow up to do a tour, if, if she so chooses, um, or other Commissioners as well, but thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Anderson.
Uh, thank you very much, uh, you mentioned, uh, sending out a copy of the plumes, uh, could you do that, and when you do that, could you also send a copy of this report, uh, to go over a little bit in more detail for some of us, thank you, really appreciate it, thank you.
Commissioner Anderson, I believe, uh, Barb has the presentation that she can forward to us, and then if you can forward the map, that would be great. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on to communications, communication number twenty-five-two forty-nine, Patty and Chris Solmanson requesting counsel. Oh, there's another presentation, I apologize. Oh, Black Tail, I apologize.
No problem.
Uh, is it Alex?
It is, yes.
Thank you, welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you so much, just wait for my presentation to come up. Okay, thank you Chairman Morgan, thank you Council of Commissioners for having us this evening. Um, my name is Alex Ruzovich, I'm an environmental project officer for the, uh, Montana Department of Environmental Quality, and I'm very pleased to present to you the thirty percent remedial design for the Black Tail Creek Riparian Actions. Um, so I just thought this was an interesting photo, it's a historical photo taken in around nineteen sixty-two, you can see in the center, to situate yourselves, uh, the interstate bridges before they're actually connected to the interstate there. Just north of there is the bute reduction works, um, can actually point it out here, oh, no, it doesn't show up on the screen. Um, but reduction works, you can see the smokestack there and the slag wall just to the north of that, and then Silver Bow Creek running through the slag wall into the confluence area where it connects to Black Tail Creek, which is the long dark stream to the right-hand side of the photo. And the yellow outline there is the Black Tail Creek Riparian Actions project area. Uh, also, what's interesting about this photo is that Montana Pole Treatment Facility is also located there on the left-hand side. Okay, so, topics on the agenda today include the scope of the Black Tail Creek Project, uh, progress that DEQ has made to date, an overview of the thirty percent remedial design, next immediate steps, and a longer-term projected schedule. So, starting off with the scope of the project, as you might be aware, Black Tail Creek is located within the Bute Priority Soils Operable Unit, it's actually just one piece of the larger BIPSU, as we like to call it, puzzle. It's located there in the southeastern corner of the city outlined in red. Um, and it is one of the further remedial element scopes of work that is within the consent decree alongside Digging Zee, Snor Side Tailings, and Buffalo Gulch. Um, what makes this project distinct from other free sows in the CD are that this one is led by DEQ. So what that means is that DEQ received a settlement of twenty point five million dollars in order to implement the remediation. And we shepherd the process every step of the way from remedial design through remedial action. And that includes selection of contractors, uh, development of their remedial design, construction oversight, and stakeholder engagement and communications throughout the entire process. We also collaborate very closely with the project partners such as EPA, Atlantic Richfield, Bute Silver, Silver Bow County, and, um, CTEC, Natural Resource Damage Program, et cetera. So this is a closer look at the Black Tail Cree- Creek Riparian Actions project area. Um, just to geographically locate yourselves, right in the center, uh, is the Visitor Center, and next to that, the KOA. Bounded on the western side of the site is the, um, is Montana Street. On the eastern side is Lexington and Caw Avenue. To the north is Silver Bow Creek, and then to the south, as you saw in the previous photo, is I ninety. So, just a bit of history, there were three things that altered the hydrology and geomorphology of this site, and that includes, one, channelization and straightening of Black Tail Creek right there in the center. Um, two, there were tailings dams that were constructed as a result of the mining and smelting operations in the area that caused some flooding uh, within the floodplain there, and then third, we have a number of berms that were constructed in the project area. As you can see, there's kind of a light beige or yellow line to the south of Black Tail Creek, that's a berm that was constructed with the readily available materials on the site, which were essentially just mine tailings. So, as a result of these, the contaminants of concern in the area include arsenic, cadmium, mercury, copper, lead, and zinc. So getting into a little bit more detail around what the Black Tail Creek Riparian Actions are, they are actually, um, two different components, one is a surface water quality component, and the other is groundwater quality. DEQ is responsible for the remediation and restoration of the site, so that includes the removal of tailings waste, contaminated materials in the hundred-year floodplain, reconstruction of the channels and floodplains of Black Tail Creek and Silver Bow Creek, and re- revegetation of the banks and floodplains with native plant species. So, DEQ is leading the waste removal, whereas Atlantic Richfield is, are the ones that are installing a groundwater hydraulic control system that aims to capture and treat the groundwater on the site. Um, and these two components function together to support a cleaner waterway that's running from Black Tail Creek into Silver Bow, all the way through Bute and beyond downstream to the Clark Fork River. So some progress to date that we have made on Black Tail Creek include a twenty-twenty-three pre-design investigation, or PDI, can, conducted with contractor support from Hydrogeologic, where we resolved data gaps that were originally identified in the CD. This included mapping of the lateral and vertical extent of waste, or, um, the surface extent of the waste as well as the depth into the soil. We also characterized the waste, municipal waste, and contaminated soil and sediments on the site, and then we estimated the dewatering volume and rate necessary to be able to pull up all of those mine tailings and contamination. So these results from our PDI resulted in, um, key parts of the design criteria that were able to be formulated to inform the development of the thirty percent design. Going into a little bit more detail around the thirty percent, um, I'll start with the dewatering, because you can probably recognize that there is a lot of water on the site, this is a wetland ecosystem. There is Black Tail Creek running through, there is Silver Bow Creek on the northern edge, and then you can see on the southern portion of the site, um, this is a wetland, there's seasonally inundated soils and a pond, um, that's there year-round, so we're anticipating lowering the water table by about seven feet on the site, using a combination of extraction wells, of, um, trenching along the perimeter, and then of some pumping to be able to pull out the water in more localized locations there. All of that dewatering water will be sent to a settling basin where it will allow the sediments to drop out, and then be able to test that water in order to determine if we could meet, uh, surface water quality standards to be able to discharge directly back into the creek. If it does not meet those performance standards, it will be sent to the Bute Treatment Lagoon for treatment before it's discharged back into the creeks. And then I'll also just note that, um, we will ensure that the creeks are protected from any runoff that is associated with construction activities. Next, we are looking to excavate the soil after dewatering, so the extent of that waste was determined by, as I mentioned, the PDI or pre-design investigation. The pink boundary lines are what delineate the excavation boundaries, you may have noticed that the southeastern corner is not included within those boundaries, nor is the in-stream sediments within the creek to the east of Caw Avenue. That's because the PDI did not find any waste within those portions of the site, and therefore, we were able to sort of refine those boundaries. Um, we're anticipating around twenty feet of excavation in the southern portion of the site, and in the northern portion, around thirteen feet of excavation below ground surface. Um, in the orange area, in that sort of circular portion that's not included within the excavation boundaries, that portion of land is owned by Silver Bow, uh, Bute Silver Bow County, but it's actually designated an unreclaimed site, it's known as UR forty-one, and it's the obligation of Atlantic Richfield to be able to take care of the remediation there. However, we are using that orange boundary layer there to, um, one, stage our heavy equipment, and two, to, uh, use as a laydown area in order to, um, dry out the waste and track the volume of material that's coming off of the site. From there, we'll be able to, uh, use whatever means of transportation and haul route that is determined by the siting committee to an EPA-reapproved repository, using appropriate decontamination procedures to be able to ensure that there is no trackout of contamination off of the site and, um, into the city of Bute. So, lastly, we'll be using X-ray fluorescence technology, or XRF, in order to verify complete removal from within those excavation boundaries, and XRF is essentially just a handheld analyzer that can read metal levels in the soil, and it'll be able to identify those waste materials and, uh, verify that they've been completely removed in real time. Just a quick look at our estimated volumes. We're anticipating around a hundred and thirty-five thousand cubic yards of material coming off of the site. This includes waste, like mine tailings, as well as municipal waste, um, and debris that we might encounter within the soil, and then finally, type-three material, which is material that does not meet the criteria for waste as defined in the consent decree, and it does not meet the criteria for backfill to be able to put that in, back into the site. Um, I also just wanna draw your attention quickly to the northern end of the site, as you can see, there's a lot of different types of infrastructure and utilities that are kind of crisscrossing the area. This includes things like overhead and buried electric, fiber optic cables, um, bridge abutments, culverts, um, the BIPSU subdrain, other types of monitoring wells and, and pipes, so, um, we are calculating our removal volumes with a ten-foot buffer around those infrastructures. Um, and we're also reviewing an alternatives analysis at this time to determine what of this might be uh, deemed critical infrastructure and what might not, so you can see here in the legend that overhead electric is the red dashed lines, fiber optic cables are the orange dashed lines, and then monitoring wells are the pink, uh, dots on the site. And those may or may not be deemed, um, appropriate to be, and feasible to be able to move and replace during construction. Um, so those details will be provided and determined, um, within the sixty percent design in the next iteration. Lastly, I'll just talk a bit about reconstruction. So as I mentioned before, Black Tail Creek will need to be redirected, um, and will be reconstructing the channel, uh, into this kind of, the lower part, which is, um, a new channel that is, it's got more sinuosity, meaning it has more meanders and curves, um, which was designed to mimic more upstream, upstream reaches of the creek. Um, I would just note that these are conceptual drawings, so it might not look exactly like this in the final design. However, um, it will be connected hydraulically to some additional ponds in the area, and all of this will serve to promote a higher water table, um, to be able to serve as a wetland ecosystem. Lastly, we'll be revegetating with wetland riparian and upland seed mixes and propagules in the site. Um, and this is to serve some of the end land use objectives for Black Tail, which is public recreation and, and, uh, wildlife habitat. So really, our goal with this design is to be able to meet those end land use objectives by supporting a healthy wetland functioning ecosystem, um, that increases or maintains plant and animal diversity. Um, you might know that Black Tail Creek is home to several trout species, including the native west slope cutthroat- native west slope cutthroat trout, and this is designated as a Montana special fish of special concern. So it does serve as a refuge for spawning and rearing young in this portion of the creek. We'll also support public access to fishing in the area, as determined by the landowner, and protect and reconstruct any walking trails as necessary, because these walking trails do link to other green space projects that will be reclaimed under BIPSU. So essentially, this is going to serve as a community resource for ongoing recreational opportunity for the public, as well as environmental value. All right, so the next anticipated steps by DEQ include some field investigations that includes in-stream sediment sampling, a stream habitat and wetlands assessment, as well as some sampling to determine a clean source of backfill, and all of those results will be incorporated into the 60% design. You can also expect a refinement and expansion of some of the details concerning dewatering, the bio-source location and logistics, the channel design, as well as continued coordination with Atlantic Richfield around the hydraulic control project, and the haul means and route to the repository. Lastly, just looking at our remedial design and remedial action schedule in the long term, we are currently in the remedial design phase. As I mentioned before, the 60% is the next iteration that we are anticipating being out around March or April of next year. There is a 95% that comes before the final design, but you can look toward around February of 2027, when we finalize and complete and approve that 100% design. I will just note that we coordinate very closely with multiple agencies throughout a review and comment process at each stage of the design. So adhering to the schedule, we'll be dependent on efficient and timely coordination with Atlantic Richfield, NRDP, CTEC, and EPA for final approval. Immediately after design, we'll go into remedial action, and this timeline is also dependent on sequencing with other BIPSU projects in the area. And the reason for that sort of, the importance of that systematic completion is that there are upstream projects that could potentially recontaminate Black Tail Creek if it were done out of order. So we do look towards Diggings East, Northside Tailings, and Buffalo Gulch to be able to finish their projects before we can move into construction. We are anticipating construction to last around two years, with the active construction phase going from about July through October of each year, and then finally, the final completion report around the end of 2028. So after construction, we'll move into a final monitoring and maintenance phase, and this is the final part of DEQ's responsibility, where we'll monitor the remedy until performance standards are achieved. This portion of our obligation will last a minimum of one year, but it could go longer, depending on how long it takes to achieve, for example, vegetation performance standards. We'll also be looking towards erosion control monitoring, infrastructure protection assessments, and maintaining of access controls like fencing and signage. After the compliance determination is made by EPA and DEQ has issued the certificate of completion, we will begin the transition of the site and of the operation and maintenance phase to Atlantic Richfield, who will take over until it's deemed operating and functional as required by the CD. So that is the full picture, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do any of the commissioners have any questions? Commissioner O'Leary?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Ms. Rusovich, for your presentation there. There was one overhead that you had there that had the drying pad location that's right along the interstate there. I was wondering if there is any intention to put any kind of visual screening up there? You know, that's a main location coming into Butte, and having it be a drying pad with a bunch of mine waste for multiple years on end, I think, would be an unfortunate thing, but if you could speak to that, that'd be great.
Sure, yes. Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Commissioner. Great question. We will be, in anticipation of the waste being in that area, we will be implementing some traffic control measures to be able to regulate the traffic that's coming onto the site to, for example, come to the visitor's center, or to the KOA, or anywhere along those streets. We haven't finalized any of those details. You can expect that in the 60%. But I can assure that there will also be appropriate decontamination procedures for any of the waste that's in that area. There will be, as you know, the waste that's coming out of those boundaries is going to already be wet. So typically, we use a water truck to be able to keep the dust down in that area, but because it's already wet and the purpose of the laydown area is to dry the waste, we won't have to use a water truck. So the idea is that we'll dry it out to an appropriate percentage, and then, using whatever means are chosen by the siting committee for the means of transportation of that waste, we will then load it up as necessary, and then make sure that there is no waste being tracked back out of the site, for example, if a haul truck were used.
Follow-up, Commissioner O'Leary.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. So do you have an intended location for the repository for this particular waste? Is that already decided?
I'm Alex.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioner. Also, a great question. This is outside the scope of DEQ's role to determine where the repository will be. However, there is a siting committee made up of Butte-Silver Bow County, Atlantic Richfield, with final approval from the EPA. So I can't tell you what the repository details look like. I personally don't know myself, but as soon as we do, we'll be able to incorporate that into our construction planning documents and share that out with the public as soon as that's made available, either in the 60% or in subsequent iterations of the design.
I believe Director Hassler had his hand up. Director Hassler, I would just ask to see if you have any input on that question?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Commissioner O'Leary, we're still in the process of the siting committee report and the technical recommendations as we speak. So we are reviewing the sites that the original siting committee came up with. There's four of them. We have the Berkeley, we have the expanded mine waste repository. It's really down to those two at this point in time. We are working with Atlantic Richfield closely on mainly the transport mechanism. We're trying to make it as least impactful to the community as we possibly can. So at this point, we don't have a definitive answer, but we're kind of down to those two final locations as what are coming to the top through the technical evaluations that have been conducted, and the surveys, and the work done by the original siting committee, and that would be the Berkeley or the existing mine waste repository at this point in time. But the big question is, is trying to figure out the least impactful way to move this volume of material to one of those locations.
Commissioner Callahan, you had a question?
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I just want to thank Ms. Dymant and your whole crew, that every time you guys come, I mean, you do a great job. It's hard to keep up on all this stuff, and it's so far above everybody's level that just to bring it down to our level's a tough job, as it is. You had mentioned the area you're cleaning up, and I see it's pretty much west of Ka Avenue. This might be a question Eric might have to answer. From that area to Harrison Avenue to probably Father Sheen Park, there's still heavy metals and stuff. Could you kind of explain where that project is? Because this project can't really work right if that project isn't cleaned also.
Director Hassler.
Chairman Morgan, Commissioner Callahan, that is part of Westside Soils, and it has been through the remedial investigation and feasibility stage. We're waiting to see that report ourselves, but the initial indications is that that section of stream is not contaminated and should not impact the work that is done here, unlike the projects that Alex had mentioned earlier that we know where the contamination is present and work needs to be done. But through the RAFS process that the EPA conducted through Westside Soils, essentially Black Tail Creek and those stretches that you have mentioned is clean.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Okay. Follow-up, Commissioner O'Leary.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I guess sort of to piggyback off of that same question, you were mentioning these upstream projects that need to happen first. Do we believe that those projects are going to happen on time for this timeframe that you've given us here to be, actually go forward in that timeframe?
Director Hassler.
Chairman Morgan, Commissioner O'Leary, currently, the Diggings East, which is the most upgrading, Diggings East and Northside's tailings are sitting at 95%. Diggings East is at 95%. Northside Tailings is at the 60% design. Really, the crux to that question is getting through this siting report and finding a final resting place for these materials and the transport mechanism. The last 5% in these designs is very fast, and the hopes for Diggings East is to start moving material the beginning of next construction season. So it's, they're complicated. They're large volumes, very technical work. I think the timeframe that has been laid out is achievable, but it's ambitious. So, sorry, I can't be more direct or specific, but I would again say that I believe that it's achievable, but it's ambitious.
Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you. I guess we're above 30, 60%.
Fish, can you turn your mic on? I don't...
Oh, sorry. Thank you, Chairman. When we're talking about these 30 and 60% design and things, the project that is just east of Ka Avenue, very nice looking, and, you know, it's a nice amenity and stuff. But I hear a lot of comments from people that know a lot more about Superfund than I do, that question that project. I guess my question is, why did that project have priority over some of the other projects that seem to be more on people's mind than that project was?
Chairman Morgan, Commissioner Fisher, the best answer I can give you for that is it was the smallest geographically and the least technical, so it was a good project to try to get everybody's feet wet to implement the larger, more voluminous, more technical projects going forward. Wasn't a technical basis, there was no, I mean, the rationale was, it's smaller. Let's see what this takes, how we can work our way through it, try to come across whatever pitfalls we may see along the way and learn from it, so that we can implement the larger projects more efficiently and effectively.
Follow-up, Commissioner Fisher. The only thing I would say is that this communication tonight is for that section that they were talking about. I know it's all related, but just try to tie it together. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. I guess I was misunderstanding. I thought this was all kind of tied together. But my question is, is the questions I get as a commissioner, Eric, you know more than anything, the questions we get, and I understand that we're on the other side of the interstate and doing things there, but the thing about this is priorities of these projects seem to fall within the realm of what is the most appealing to the public, what is the most, you know, scenic for everyone, rather than actually getting the projects done that really make a difference. So, I mean, I don't need no answers to these questions. I'm just referring to you, what's told to me, and I'm sure you hear them too. But, you know, the Diggings East, you know, and the contaminated soil and the dirty dirt, we get into a lot of different stuff here. It involves DEQ, the EPA, and, you know, ARCO BP. And I know it's a complex subject, but the public has a tough time understanding sometimes how this money's spent, you know? There's a lot of money spent on that project I referred to that's not in this communication, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Chairman Morgan, Commissioner Fisher, I'd also like to add on the Grove Creek project is the one that you're mentioning that is south and east of the interstate. That one also has a direct conduit, if you will, to Black Tail Creek, so it is beneficial to protect the work that the EQ will be implementing in the future. I mean, Grove Creek does have continuous flow, and it will work, it is intended to treat those waters before going into Black Tail Creek. So that is another aspect that needed to be considered throughout the sequencing of projects as well. So, thank you.
Any follow-up, Commissioner Fisher? No? Okay. Any other comments? Commissioner Anderson.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you very much, Alex, for being here. I have a question that's, I don't know, not really related, but very much so, in a different When Jacob gave his presentation, he was talking about a herd of deer living just up the ways a little bit at the pole plant with the new seeding and everything they've done. And now we're building this beautiful oasis for wildlife, you know, wildlife birds and deer and everything, and it's right next to an interstate. And I just wonder about some of the ramifications of having such an oasis for wildlife right next to the interstate.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. Thank you, Commissioner. Very good question. I think that Black Tail Creek is already a wetland habitat. If you go and walk along the pedestrian trail, you'll see a lot of waterfowl in the area, ducks. As I mentioned before, it's home to several trout species, and I think it serves as an urban oasis and one that is currently so. And really, the only difference is that we'll be taking out the contaminants that are impacting the surface water quality. So, you know, we will be replacing the wetland vegetation there, we'll be promoting a higher water table in order for it to serve as a functioning wetland ecosystem with all of the ecosystem services that it provides. But I don't think it would change the character of the site, other than, that's really the goal of the project, is to clean up the surface water quality, and I don't think it would serve as an attractant for animal species that don't already call Black Tail Creek and the surrounding wetlands home. I will say that during construction, we'll do everything we can to dewater and rehome the aquatic species that are in the creek. And I don't have those specific details within the 30% design, because it's still in the early phases, but I think in the end, this will serve as the community resource that it currently is, and there should be, you know, whatever controls exist along the interstate currently, like fencing, as decided by the landowner, to mitigate some of the animal, you know, crossings into the traffic of the interstate.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Any other questions or comments? All right. Well, thank you for the presentation and the follow-up on it, and we look forward to seeing what the future brings.
Thank you.
Thank you. If it's all right with this body, I'd like to move forward, if it's okay. We'll move on to Section 2 Communications. Communication 2025-249, Patty and Chris Solmanson requesting Council of Commissioners approval to purchase a portion of land owned by Butte-Silver Bow, which is adjacent to their property located at 17 Tullamore Street. It's my understanding that the Land Sales Committee did meet on October 14th, so we should be receiving some recommendations on the November 5th meeting, or shortly thereafter, for this communication. So I don't know what any of those are. I would just say that in the record. So we'll continue to hold that, this one in abeyance. Number 2, Communication 25427, Marlo and Nicole Carrolls requesting Council of Commissioners to per- of Commissioners to purchase land owned by Butte-Silver Bowe, located on the southeast corner of Maryland and Second. We would like to use it for our yards, space and property we own on one thousand six Maryland Avenue in Butte. Same thing, we'll continue to hold this in abeyance, waiting for the Land Sales Committee. Number three, Communication twenty-two-five-four-thirty-seven, Thomas Kinnicky, personal representative for the estate of William La Hood, requesting Council of Commissioners to purchase land owned by Butte-Silver Bowe and approve the sale of lots sixteen and seventeen to the estate of William La Hood in the amount of one thousand dollars. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the Land Sales Committee recommendation. Number four, Communication twenty-five-four-sixty, Steve Maloney, Butte resident, requesting Council of Commissioners to purchase a portion of the tax parcel zero-zero-zero-one-eight-nine-two-four-zero-zero, pending a survey to be completed and a correction, um, and a correction deed. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance as well. Number five, Communication twenty-five-four-seventy-one, Mark Neary, Public Works Director, requesting Council of Commissioners to schedule a bid opening on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five for the Silver Lake Industrial Water System Improvement. This was the bid opening that we were supposed to have tonight, but it was, uh, replaced with Communication twenty-five-dash-five-hundred. I would just ask that we place this on file and cross-reference with, uh, the new communication. Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to place Communication number twenty-two-five-dash-four-seven-one on file and cross-reference it with Communication number twenty-two-five-dash-five-hundred.
Thank you. There's been a motion made and seconded to place this communication on file and cross-reference with twenty-five-dash-five-hundred. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yay, zero nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number six, Communication twenty-five-four-seven-two, Amy Steinmetz, DEQ Waste Management and Remediation Division Administrator, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a presentation on October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, for updates on the Black Tail Creek project located in the Butte Priority Soils Operable Unit and the Montana Pole Superfund Site. As you all know, we did have this presentation tonight, so Commissioner Thatcher.
Thank you, Chairman Morgan. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to place Communication number twenty-two-five-dash-four-seven-two on file.
There's been a motion made and seconded to place Communication twenty-five-four-seven-two on file. Is there anything on the question? Would everyone please vote? Would anyone like to change their vote? Would the clerk please record the vote?
Ten yay, zero nay.
Thank you. Motion passes. Number seven, Communication twenty-five-four-ninety-four, Zach Osborne, Butte-Silver Bowe Fire Chief, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing for November fifth, twenty-twenty-five, for the purpose of amending the fiscal year twenty-five-twenty-six Fire Department budget to allow for increased expenditures of unanticipated revenue. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the November fifth date. Number eight, Communication twenty-five-five-hundred, Angie Mulliken, Public Works Budget Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners to reschedule a bid opening on November fifth for the Silver Lake Industrial Water System Improvement Project. We'll continue to hold this one in abeyance as well pending the November fifth bid opening. Number nine, Communication twenty-five-five-oh-three, Angie Mulliken, Public Works Budget Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing for November fifth, twenty-five, for sole sourcing the Sulzer replacement parts through Falcon Environmental, the only dealer in Montana. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the public hearing on November fifth. Number ten, Communication twenty-five-five-oh-four, Angie Mulliken, Public Works Director, or, excuse, pardon me, Public Works Budget Manager, requesting Council of Commissioners authorization to schedule a public hearing on November fifth, twenty-five, for the purpose of soliciting comments on unanticipated revenue from the Department of Natural Resources and conservation from the USDA Cooperative Forestry Program to plant trees throughout Skyline Park. We'll continue to hold this in abeyance pending the public hearing on November fifth. November fifth is going to be a big and busy day. Um, next item on tonight's agenda is public comment on any public matter not on tonight's agenda. If there's any member of the public that would like to speak on anything that wasn't on tonight's agenda, now would be your opportunity. Not seeing anyone, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thanks, everyone, and have a good night.